Good evening, everyone. If I could ask Father Noah Lawson from St. Albans Church to come forward and lead us in our opening invocation.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we humbly come before Thee and pray on behalf of the city of Los Banos in general, but especially for this city council, that You would be pleased to direct and prosper all of their consultations to the advancement of Your glory, for the safety, honor, and welfare of our community; that all things may be so ordered and settled by their endeavors upon the best and surest of foundations, that peace and happiness, truth and justice, religion and piety, may be established among all of us for all generations. These and all other necessities for them, for us, and for this city of Los Banos, we humbly beg in the name and mediation of Jesus Christ, our most blessed Lord and Savior. Amen.
I'd like to call the city council meeting of September the 6th, 2017, to order. And Chief, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, City Clerk Melanie.
Here.
Johnson, Santos, Lewis.
Present.
Walta.
All right, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval agenda. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Faria?
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to item number five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers informational table. Please state your name and city of residence, and remind everybody that if you could please either place your cellphones on silent or in the vibrate mode. Thank you. So, item number six, oh, excuse me, we're gonna now open the public forum.
My name is Marlene C. Miller Alves. I'm the sixth generation in the city of Los Banos. I am a sign company, and we have a grave issue here of the sign ordinance which has been on hold. As of 2010, it was moved to .75 from one-to-one. Because of this problem, we've had signs removed that have been over 35 years old. I propose that we go back and put it one-to-one. The city needs one-to-one. They are deep inside, off of the highway. One-to-one is a nice number, not including their hours possibly on their door. I have some jobs that are on hold right now. Now, we really need to do this. Another issue is the water issue. The water issue of us being charged $89 a month, which is the highest in the state of California. Now, we also stepped through those doors of Clovis. Clovis is charging under $30 for every two months. I feel that we, I'd like to propose that we have the water measured through the meters that we have existing, rather than charging people $89 a month minimum. There's a lot of low-income people, elderly people, that cannot afford this. And then we have extra charges as well, once your water is closed off, including administration charges. I mean, what is that? They're getting paid for their job. Now, I'm sorry, you know, I got a real burr under my saddle right now, and I really do feel that this issue really needs to be addressed. And this water? Oh, my goodness. The reason I'm so irritated right now, I've been looking up the issue about the water and the chromosome six and all that. You guys gotta look that up. Birth defects, everything that can cause this. The water is lousy. And also, beautification effect on downtown. The people in downtown don't even know about the issue of releasing the water into the grounds, into the planters. That you, they, they're told that they, all they have to do is ask the city for doing it, but they don't know that. They have to be notified of that. If we can release the water into the planters, we could have people, I mean, for grandfathers, generation, generation, seeds, plants have just been donated to each and every person. All we have to do is harvest the seeds and plant those seeds, release the water, and you will have beautification. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is John V. Gomez. I live on 1522 West High Street. And I'm here to talk about, I have two carports that were put up in 2009. And I've had them there for going on, well, it's eight years going on now. And they're there for a reason, because at the time, my, my house, I don't have a garage. I never did have a garage, because there was a model home at the time when the town was being built, and that was the office. And then after they went ahead and sold the house to me and made a family room out of it. But I have my cars that the sun just eats them up, and the weather and the rain and all. I tried buying the covers and whatever for them, and I paid a lot of money for them, and it would just eat them up in a year or less. So I decided, well, you know, I think I'll just go ahead and put some, put a carports up. And, but I says, I wanna have good ones, not, not no, you know, small type or other. So, 'cause I went ahead and I came to the city hall and, and asked for a permit. At the time, the inspector wasn't available. There was a young lady that came to the counter and said if she could help me, and I says, yeah, I told her. She goes, well, maybe I can help you. And I said, okay. So, I went ahead and told her what I wanted to do. I gave her the dimensions, you know, the height and width and length and all, and, and she says, well, are they attached to the fence or any buildings? And I says, no, no. No, there's, there's, they're free, free stand. I said, they're portable. And she goes, oh, that's, that's okay. They're portable, you don't need a permit. And I says, I don't? She goes, no. So I says, all right. So I went ahead and I put them up. And I painted them at the back of the house so they would look neat, and they are neat. And so, about two weeks ago or so, I had an officer came knocking at the door and asked my name, and then said, your carports are illegal. And I says, I said, what are you talking about? And he says, they're illegal, they gotta, you gotta take them down. I said, you gotta be kidding me. Take them down? And he says, yes. And I said, my God, I says, he said, you have a permit? And I says, no. I didn't need one when I put them up, 2009. And he goes, well, they're illegal. And I said, Jesus, Christ, I said, you know, I got a lot of money on, and I'm so particular with them, always, they're always clean and neat, 65, 365 days a year, they're always the same. And they're protecting my equipment. I've got, you know, a lot of money on the cars, whatever. I can't afford to be buying cars every two years or whatever. So, I put this up, and it's been great. They've been saving my equipment. And now they're illegal. And I feel that it's wrong. Because if they tell me that you don't need a permit, and then now they, they come back and say you need a permit, well, then how come they didn't tell me that eight years ago, when that street is pretty busy? I'm sure the inspector and the city people have gone by down that street and seen those carports. Why haven't they tell, told me about it way sooner than eight years later? So I find that awful wrong. And I'm here to ask, and maybe they can take a look at them and, and let me keep them. I'm to the point now that I'm too old to work anymore. I worked all my life, and everything that I got, it took a long time to get it. I've saved and all to get all this, and now here I got something that is gonna be neat, nice, and protecting my equipment, and then I got, they're illegal, and I gotta take them down. I find that's wrong. That's my case. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public forum?
My name is Martha Mayne, and here for the same reason. This is my second carport. The first one I had was a canvas one, and I had, I've had them for over 15 years. And I came in to the planning or whatever and asked if I needed a permit. As long as it's not attached to the house, you don't need a permit. So, the canvas one was up for several years, and then I got a metal one, a very nice metal one. I don't feel that it's obstructing anything. My husband was sick for many, many years, so I tried to keep up the house on my own, you know, keep everything nice and neat. So, I don't know what the problem is here, you know, but I, this is really causing me a lot of problems, and not everyone got these, not everyone was sighted. I have a relative who has a nice big double one, he was not sighted. So, I, I'm not sure what's happening here. Are we being picked on? Were we, did somebody complain about us? I don't know. But I really would like to be, something to be done about this, because, you know, like I said, my house faces west in the evening, and I get a lot, a lot of hot sun, so that's part of the problem. I also want to protect my car. I'm a widow, and, you know, I, I'm a limited income, so, you know, I really would like to see something done about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Johnson Santos is here. Would anyone else like to speak at the public forum?
My name is Sandy Machado, and I was born and raised here in Los Banos. And I'm also here for the same reason about the carport. I live on the same street as Martha, on the same side, which sun is a, is a little bit of a problem, you know? That's why we have the carport, to protect our vehicles. Had mine for 11-plus years, and like Martha said, we've never heard anything about them until, you know, this last, prior 10 days before this, that, that they were not allowed. And at the time when we purchased it from Pereira's Automotive, I didn't hear anything about, you know, any, about, you know, what needed a permit or any of that stuff. Everything just was paperwork, and we signed it. They came, America, America Steel was the one that put ours in. So, I'm basically here to, just to tell my concerns, a little nervous, tell my concerns about the, the carport, that I really don't wanna lose my carport either, because I did put out, you know, good money for that too. Okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at the public forum?
My name is Or Hernandez. I'm on the new area of town. I'm in Overland in Fairmont. But maybe about two months ago, a police officer came to my house and asked me if he had a permit for the carport. I lived in the same property for 10-plus years, and, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. It's my first time speaking in public.
Don't be nervous.
So, he came over and asked me for a permit. I said, I didn't have a permit. And he told me that someone had complained about the carport, and that I needed to take it down. Okay? So I asked him who it was, or who he or she was the person who complained about the carport. They said that it was an anonymous complaint, and that you guys weren't gonna be able to tell me, and this and that. So I asked them that, what could I do for, for me to keep the carport where I had it? Yeah, I had it in front of my house. And he told me that there wasn't anything for me to do. So, he gave me two weeks to remove the carport, which I complied, and I did it. I, I sold the carport. I paid $1,300 for it, and I sold it for $200, because they gave me two weeks to remove it. I don't have it anymore, you know, but I just read on Facebook a posting about carports, and I wanna come here and make, make my voice, you know, be heard by you guys. You guys are the ones who make all the decisions, and I think, I believe, that a lot of times people make decisions, because a lot of people don't show up to these meetings. So, I'm here to voice my opinion. I was really upset at the beginning, because I had that carport for eight, nine years. I came over and asked for permission to, to get a, a permit for the carport. They told me the same thing, if it wasn't attached to the house, then I didn't need a permit. You know, that's all they told me, and I went home like happy, you know? I was gonna comply and pay for the permit. But they said that it was okay, so I went ahead and, and put the carport. And now I don't have it. I don't have it anymore, you know? And I just wanted to say that a few years back, police were chasing someone, and I live at a corner house, and that someone went into my house, ran into my house, into my garage. And the only, the only thing that stopped that person from going into my garage, it was the carport. That's the only thing that protected my, my, my house and my cars. So now it's gone. Maybe the house looks nicer. Another thing that the, the first person who came to my house told me it's that, that the carport didn't look good in front of my house. And I told this person that whenever she starts paying my mortgage, she, she'll be able to pay, to tell me what to do, what not to do in my house. And she laughed about it. She, I don't know if she longer works with, with the code enforcement people, you know, but that's what she told me. She told me that I was gonna get a, that the city was gonna put a lien on my house if I didn't move, remove the carport, which, to me, it's, it's, I don't know, I don't know how to say it. It's just that, it's upsetting that, that you guys are here to protect the people, los banios, and sometimes people like me, I'm speaking for myself, I feel like I'm being threatened by you guys, because you guys make decisions just based on you guys' whatever you guys wanna do. It's just my opinion. If I'm wrong, I do apologize to all of you guys. But that's all I have to say to you guys. I hope you guys can do something about the carports. I don't use my garage, because I have a lot of stuff in my, my garage, so that's why I decided to purchase the carport and have it outside and protect my cars. That was the only reason why. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public forum?
Yes, my name is Harvey Cepeda, and I live at 1118 Broderick Court. And I'm here for the same reason. I had mine up for 20 years, 'cause I'm a handicap, and when it rains, it's hard to go to the walkway and slip in the rain. And about 10 years ago, a lady from here came in from the code enforcement, and she says, you know, you're gonna have to chop it back. So I said, well, why? She goes, 'cause your neighbor over there put the finger on you. So I go, okay. So I had it cut back, and then it says, okay. And now, what, a few days ago, they go up there again, and says, you know, we're here again. Now, they've been here in that street for, I know there's a lot of cars, and the guy across the street from me, I got a corner lot, and I bought it, 'cause I liked my yard clean and everything else. So, here he comes, big old tree trimmer truck, parks it there for a week, and he says, oh, it's over so many tons. I go, well, it's in front of my house. He brings limbs and everything else. I go, I guess some people have special handouts or something, 'cause, I mean, I see a lot of them all over town. And I figure, okay. And I used to have a suburban, and I live in a court, so one time we went out and then came back, my windshield was a little cracked, 'cause kids go out there and play baseball, so I go, replace my windshield. So I put that on there too, for, you know, protection on my cars and the sun, you know, it beats down on them, so I figure, okay. But now they came back, and I cut it back, when the lady came from enforcement, and he says, okay, you're okay now. Now, a few days ago, they come back again, and I go, you see across the street, guy has a big old motorhome right there in front lawn? And I go, I thought that was illegal. Looks worse than my overhang. Mine is all metal, professionally done. And then the other lady before told me, you know, the recent two, he goes, 'cause you live right here, and when they come out, you block the view. I go, I got a big old suburban. My overhang is not enclosed. So I go, what's the problem? I go, I could put trees. It's legal. So I go, why you telling me that it's blocking the view? And if you go right there, you can see it, you can see his driveway and everything else, so it's not blocking nothing. I live right on the corner, and nobody's complaining, but, you know, they went, like I said, they hit a few people there. And the other guy right there has two or three trucks, I mean, they look like, and the camper show right there, about two feet out the curb, he didn't bother with that. So they're just hitting certain people? I just wanted to come and say, you know, I had it for 20 years, and I paid good money for it, and I cut it back. I had somebody come over, 'cause I'm a handicap, so he moved it back, and he says, okay, you're good now. Now they come back again, and now, and I was looking at your thing here, that code is not here. It was written on. How long ago did this code went on? In effect, 'cause I read all the codes right here, you got this, garbage cans, this and that, but about carports are not on there. It was just added on. So I go, something that hadn't seemed right, 'cause it's not in the paper. You got all the different codes, and that was not here. So that somebody just put it on there? And I just wanted to come and voice my opinion, 'cause I don't think it's fair that, you know, if that's the case, then, you know, they gotta make everybody take them off. And I go, what if I was to build my house up? Is that legal? Make it longer? Bring it up to almost the street? 'Cause all the houses come up to the street almost. So I figure, okay, if they make me take it down, what I'm gonna have to do is have one built permanent, extend my house so I could have a longer carport. I mean, if you go and see it, it looks clean, my yard, every holidays and everything, 'cause I live by Miano, so all the kids go by there, and goes, we like your decorations and, you know, your yard. So I go, now I got this. And I go, I had already fixed it once. They said, okay, you're okay. Now they come back again 10 years later. And, you know, like I said, I seen the guy right there a few times, and he passes by there, I go, they didn't go clean the gutters? You know, rain is coming, and then everything gets flooded in the winter. I go, they got better things to do than go, you know, troubling people for carports. And the other one said too, he goes, well, the reason that too, he goes, 'cause nowadays people are enclosing the garage and renting them out. I go, well, hard times are here. People don't make money. That doesn't bother me. I go, hey, you know, they got six or seven cars. I go, as long as they don't park in my yard. I got the trouble with the school parking. You know, they come and park right there where there's no parking. And I go, well, you know, they're dropping out the kids for 15, 20 minutes, no problem. If I have to pull out my car or something, I'll just wait or see what happens, you know? But I go, they never had any trouble. And now this, I go, it doesn't seem like it's fair, you know, as to why they're hitting people with carports. If somebody ran the garage, the neighbor down the street too, he goes, yeah? He goes, my garage is all enclosed legally. I got the permit.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. Okay, sir. I'm sorry, your time is up. Your five minutes is up. Thank you. Your five minutes is up. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Pro Tem Scott. I'm here tonight to, to let our residents know about our annual fall cleanup event, Saturday, September 23rd, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., in the Spring Fair Parking Lot on the corner of Fourth and F Streets in the city of Los Banos. Don't miss your chance to bring all the unwanted items you can't put into your regular garbage or green waste carts for disposal. Green waste, please separate from other materials. Car tires accepted. Must be removed from rims, maximum of nine tires. Any more than nine tires, that requires the tire hauler permit. So be on the lookout. Batteries, car and truck only. Electronic waste, TVs, computers, computer parts, DVD, VCR players, and cellphones. Household hazardous waste will be accepted this year, complements of MCAG and Clean Harbors. Paint, chemicals, household batteries will be accepted this year. No medical waste of any kind. No sharps will be accepted. For, for, for more information, please call our office, 826-0231. Thank you. Saturday, September 23rd.
From what time to what time?
7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Eric Lamone, resident of Los Banos, employee of Republic Services.
Thank you, Eric. Would anyone else like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. Bertha Faria, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. We held our final Farm to Plaza Tuesday, yesterday evening. This 13-week farmer's market brought a chance for our community to come out and enjoy fresh local produce, vendors, and music. We would like to thank the city of Los Banos and Shaskey Farms for this partnership, and we look forward to offering the market. we look forward to offering the market again next spring. We're happy to announce four new members to our roster. We've welcomed Bynum's Los Banos Mortuary, Bernie's Mixology Mobile Bartender, Rita's Italian Ice and Creamery, and Papa Murphy's Take and Bake Pizza. The chamber will welcome Papa Murphy's with a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday, the 14th of September, at 3:00 p.m. And Bynum's ribbon-cutting ceremony will be held on Thursday, September 21st, at 3:00 p.m. The public is welcome to join us to welcome these new businesses to our community. Mark your calendars for our two upcoming chamber events. The Fall Street Fair will be held on Saturday, September 16th, from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. And we will welcome vendors, music, and food, along with the rotary "Make Your Own Omelet Breakfast" at Westside Elementary. Our Seventh Annual Tomato Festival will be held on Saturday, October 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Merced County Spring Fairgrounds. Families are welcome to come out and enjoy everything tomato, including cooking classes, tomato catapult, Mr. and Miss Tomato Pageant, salsa contest, and the Tomato Chow Down competition. Entry to the fairgrounds is just $1 per person. The Los Banos Arts Council will host their annual pumpkin patch of quilts art show this Saturday and Sunday at the Ted Filasco Art Center. Admission to this two-day event is $7, and you can enjoy quilts galore, vendors, the quilters' café, and themed raffle baskets. They will also have pumpkins for sale, and they will honor a hometown hero with a special quilt presentation on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. For more information, you can contact Judy at 827-8929. The Los Banos VFW and American Legion will be hosting the Patriots Day Mixer with the Chamber on Monday, September 11th, beginning at 5:30 p.m. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council and staff. Greg Hostetler, 923 Pacheco Boulevard, Los Banos. I wanted to make a couple comments tonight. One is about the police department. I've been lucky not having too many encounters with the department for a number of years, but in the last week, Harrison Avenue, over in Presidential, had some issues over there. And to my surprise, that the police department was able to apprehend the alleged offender of the issues were taking place there. Some appears to be something like over a mile away. So I wanted to compliment the police department and the chief and his staff. I've always had high regard for the police department in Los Banos, starting with Loris Broderick, which I think I heard the Broderick name earlier tonight, Chief Broderick, and former city manager, Broderick, which encouraged me actually to get into homebuilding business back in the day. And actually would include Obie O'Brien in that. I'm gonna give part of the credit or the blame for that as well. But the Public Works Department in Los Banos actually helped train, back in the day, in 1984, '85, a substantial portion of our staff. And I want to compliment the Public Works Department now because of the relations between our staff and the Public Works Department. Los Banos is creating jobs again, and I think their department's doing a great job. I have to tell you that I don't have these opportunities that often to come here and speak and tell you what I really think about it, but the Planning Department in Los Banos is doing a great job also. I don't visit there often, but staff does, and so our staff, I get those reports from the staff, but I had personal involvement with the Harrison issue last week. I'm lucky that I haven't had to deal with the fire department. They're doing a great job, but I haven't had any fires, so I think that's all going very well for me, so I gotta tell them everything is great. And the Legal Department's doing really good, Bill. As far as the fee study goes, I think it's the right thing to do. I don't know if I'm excited about it, Alex, as I reiterated before, the last one didn't go well, but I think, given the company you've hired, Towthing, which I think you may hire, I think it's on the agenda tonight, I think it's a good, solid firm, and I think we have good leadership actually in the city manager's position. I mean, we had it a number of years. Alex, so far, has not had any big fires to put out, as I know, is a major landowner or a substantial landowner in town. I'm pretty happy about how Alex is managing the city. So, I want to talk about jobs. All of this, combined with what staff is doing, the departments, is creating jobs here with the community, is what we need. We talked about it, and they talk about it nationwide, and I think probably Washington can learn a few things from the city of Los Banos, maybe get some things done. We don't need rapid growth, but we need good job creation, solid continued job management and growth management, which the city has done over the years. I think the city's done a great job over the years. If you look at the averages and how well this city has survived in the downturn with their staff and the council. I'm kind of excited a little bit about the council because they're very seasoned. I think there's bright things on the future, Alex, so you'll probably get credit for that because you're the city manager. So, I think, is my time about up?
When your light stops.
I got a minute to go?
You got a minute to go.
Let me see. You know, maybe I'll introduce Jeff Roberts. He's a great guy from Fresno. I know he wasn't gonna say any tonight, but he's a great guy, and I'll tell you what he is. He's gonna really help our community because he has a planning background, and he understands job creation. And I want to say from our side, Stonefield Homes, Ranswood Contractors, we want to do our share to create jobs and make things happen in this community that's positive for everyone. The one comment I might make is I can tell you that I'm not convinced that the police department is the right people to do code enforcement, because I hear a lot of good things about the police department. I never hear anybody complain about getting a speeding ticket or whatever else they get a ticket for, but I hear some comments about them being involved in code enforcement. So I think they do a great job. I'm not sure that's a good use of our police department. I don't really know, because I hear a lot of good things about the department, but I didn't hear all the good things I wanted to hear tonight. And I've heard it other than tonight about code enforcement. I don't know about that. So, I've known for years they do a great job, Scotty, so Ben, you're here with our Mayor Pro Tem, and maybe the chief likes that, I don't know, but I hear a lot of good things, but that code enforcement thing. Oh. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anybody, we'll now close the public forum and move on to item number six. Consideration approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have, Director Melanie?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 206058 through 206637 in the amount of $2,415,676.35. Minutes for the August 2nd, 2017 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5885, accepting one grant deed for right-of-way dedication associated with street sidewalk corner improvements as part of the K Street storm drain improvements. City Council Resolution Number 5886, approving the annual local transportation fund claim to be filed with the Merced County Association of Governments for fiscal year 2017, 2018 in the amount of $109,874. City Council Resolution Number 5887, authorizing the award of purchase and installation agreement for the council chambers' audio and visual upgrade to Matrix Audio Visual Designs in the amount of $144,371.36. City Council Resolution Number 5888, authorizing the city manager to execute an amended professional services agreement with Manager Partners Incorporated to conduct an organizational assessment study as it pertains to insurance requirements. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any council member that would like to remove an item? Not seeing any, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Faria?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Councilmember Johnson Santos.
Seconded.
We have a motion by councilmember Faria, seconded by councilmember Johnson Santos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, Open Counter Presentation and Demonstration, and we will go to city manager, Tarazas.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have the pleasure of introducing Peter Coet, who is the president of Open Counter. As the councils are aware, we brought Open Counter online, I think it was April. Open Counter is an online planning tool to help business owners and potential business owners open a business in Los Banos. We're finding that Open Counter is an incredibly powerful and valuable tool for economic development, and we thought we just would do a demo to the council and the community on what the tool is, what the tool can do, and the future of Open Counter for Los Banos. So with that, I'll kick it over to Peter.
Thank you for that kind introduction, Alex. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. It's nice to see you again. I was last here, I believe, in December of 2016, telling you about what it is that we have built. And I'm here not only to share what we've built for Los Banos, but also to tell you that, as of today at noon, we upgraded your site to something we've been working on for 18 months, and I'm very excited that this is the first time we've really shown it in public. And I'd like to thank everyone for their help with AV, and also to give a shout out to Stacy and her help. I know she's not with us tonight, but she's been a great project partner, and it's really very nice to work with your staff down here in Los Banos. Hopefully this works. I don't know where to point it. At our basis, we help build modern permitting and licensing tools. This comes out of my experience working for the city of Santa Cruz in economic development, and now my team has grown significantly with the help of my co-founder, Joel Mahoney. We serve cities like, you know, Los Banos, Tracy Mantica here locally, but also Oakland, Sacramento, Long Beach, San Diego, Orlando, Boston. And it's been really cool to see that the problems about interface to municipal codes, code compliance, permitting and licensing, they exist at all levels of cities, all different kinds of cities, all different kinds of local economies. So basically, who we try to target are folks that do not have a ton of experience dealing with municipal regulations, typically business owners, entrepreneurs, people who are looking to invest in the community. But recognizing that opening a business, adding on to your home, building an ADU, putting on a special event is an extraordinary act, and it's something that, unless you're a developer and you've done it many times, it's not something that you can really navigate without assistance. In the city of Santa Cruz, I was one of like three people that helped with small business development. That's not always an option budgetarily for cities. Out in Santa Cruz, you know, highly regulated economy, to open an ice cream parlor, it's 21 separate city permits. And how do you learn about how to pull these permits? You know, you go to the website, the website has all the answers, but there's a lot of technical jargon. You may not know about, you know, sewer impact fees, getting an air quality district permit to tear down the old building and put up a new one. You may not know about development impact fees. So you can go in person, not always open, you know, I'm a bit of a night owl, so that closes at 5:00. And a lot of times, the interface is still the PDF, the eight and a half by 11. It's great, does the job, but is a tool from a different generation. And what we've found, particularly as we've grown and done more and more communities, is that if you look at the zoning map, or if you look at the general plan map, it's not really even telling you the whole story about development opportunities. There's plan development documents, there's rezoning documents, and, you know, you end up getting help from the city in the form of this handout from the city of Charlotte about how to pull an encroachment permit. You really only need to know the answer to four questions. But this is the handout they give you, which for me, causes even more of my hair to fall out. So what we're trying to do is accurately model existing regulations, not adding any extra steps and trying to present that information online, so that even people can do this work in advance, come in and talk to city staff, and they've both shared information about specifics. And we've actually added a lot of data into the application for staff upon initial review. So what do we do? First of all, we defined what it is that people are trying to do. Zoning data is notoriously complex. It's written by multiple authors. Computers hate this, because in Chula Vista, there's three different ways to define kennel or athletic club, and it's patched over time. City of Charlotte has had 2,600 rezoning petitions since 1990. I know, because me and two of my staff members read them. And occasionally, this information can be contradictory. Chula Vista has two separate zoning ordinances, Oceanside, California has three. Boston has about 25, because they let the neighborhood groups write their own zoning ordinances. I'll just leave that there without a comment. But once you start getting this information into databases and start looking at it as a data set, you can actually figure out a lot of cool things about how cities work. And you can also figure out, okay, we've got 100 defined uses. How uses are treated in planning and zoning is different than how they're treated in Public Works, which is different than how they're treated in the Finance Department. However, in our tool, once you select a codified use, you've already normalized yourself to those other use codes inside the city. And that means that we can clean up things, and we can present an interface like permits, like losbanos.org, which is where this site lives for you now. I think, I hope this autoplay is, I don't know, maybe I, okay, cool. So now you can type in words, like, I think I chose a synonym of restaurant to get me to restaurant. Our site also learns over time as people come up with, you know, no answer, and they have to browse for a use code, and remembers that to help the next person along the line. And we know that people are going to put in yoga studio and get normalized to instructional studio. We know they're gonna put in bistro and get restaurant, they're gonna put in brewery and get brew pub. And so we can help people, you know, put words in that they use to describe their business process, and we'll normalize that to how it's treated in the municipal codes. This is live, you can go play with it right now. And, let me, okay, cool. And then, after we get through, you know, the selection of use, then we basically build a stylized map for each person. So, you know, we worked with the GIS team here at the city and took all these various layers of GIS data that the city already had, that we're not sharing with the public, so that we can build a better interface like this one. So if, once I put in, you know, restaurant, or I'm not sure what I used for this particular service, but then we draw a map specific to where that's allowed, and you can click in on the parcel and start learning more about, you know, parcel ID numbers, all the secondary use code questions that might affect, you know, a restaurant that serves alcohol is permitted different than one that doesn't. Restaurant that has a sidewalk cafe is permitted different than one that doesn't. And so we can answer all of those questions. Again, we're asking really specific questions, like, once you give us information, we'll ask more questions along the way, so that this system starts behaving more like TurboTax and more like consumer software that we use every day, even though it's municipal software aimed to help you get this project up and running. So all these secondary use code questions there on the side are really just about us reading the footnotes of the zoning ordinance, us drilling down with staff to try to figure out how are these things permitted. Then you can get a zoning overview of what's there. You notice we've got the satellite view in there, all the information that the applicant provided, and you can either send off an inquiry at that point or move into a permitting process. I'm gonna get to that next. So now we look at permit scoping, and in this case, like, we've got a restaurant location. Playing? Okay, there we go. Got a restaurant location, then we're gonna say, you know, "Are you doing any construction?" Okay, I want to do plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. It's then gonna trigger out those permits on the right-hand side, and the more questions that you answer, this is all on one page, and we've got, you know, these responses down to like less than a second to trigger permits coming back at you. And even though I'm not showing it in this, you can also click into that permit, everyone has a description. It's got all the line items waiting to be filled out on the fees estimation side, and basically, like, we've turned your master fee schedule into another database that we lay on top of a bunch of maps, so that we can do this whole onboarding session. We can essentially do the job that I used to do for the city of Santa Cruz, almost completely in software, and then get that lined up for the various departments to be able to take these applications and move them through the process from there. So we're really proud that we've been able to model really, really complex fees across the state and across this country, including, you know, in San Diego, there's like 62 different neighborhoods for development impact fees and fire fees. The, we've done all of this for Los Banos as well. So everything that staff gave us, we were able to model out. Two of my account managers worked on this, Matt and Ling, they're finding this online somewhere. And this is all normalized down to, you know, the fixture counts, the valuation counts, and all of this lines up, and we add a bunch of data to this on the backend that we don't even show the applicant to help staff process this application as you go. So this is, you know, this is, you have the first version of the site up now, we'll move you over to this next Monday morning. We're still doing a little QA on it. This will be live next Monday. Right now, it's available in English and Spanish for Los Banos. We need to get the localization back up for you, and we'll get that in the next couple weeks back, so this is available in both languages as well. Also encourage you to look at this on your tablets or your mobile phones, it's presented that way as well, so people can do this out in the field, they can run estimations, they can learn a lot about how permitting and licensing is done in this community. Other things that we are working on for the community, here's the handoff page where we break it down to, you know, all the various permits, which departments we break it down to, you know, all the various permits, which departments control them, which application methods you need to use, whether you need to like download a PDF and mail it in, or if you need to apply in person. All of that is captured for you as well. And this becomes very important in these larger cities that we work with, where the departments aren't even in the same buildings and certainly don't talk to each other. So that's the handoff page there. We estimate that if you've got good information about what you're trying to do, you can get through the site in about five minutes, which is fantastic. And then, of course, you know, all the application forms are waiting for you at the end of that session as well. All right, so that's who we're working with now. Here's the growth of our company over time. We'll get up to about 75 cities at the end of this year, which is pretty exciting. And let's see, there are some of the metrics that I pulled. This was about a month ago. We'd had 51 applicants over summer. Nine of them had moved into formal permitting processes, representing about $51,000 with the permit fees. Next steps for us, we've already migrated to V2. We are talking to the city about, you know, starting to work on actually processing your business licenses, doing that online. We're working on a separate set of features around modeling development standards. So if you say, I'm a developer, I want to work on this parcel, we can show you what the buildable envelope is by the zoning ordinance, so you can see whether you need to go through a variance process or not. And then also, we're working on something we're calling team member functionality. Just because you have a hammer and you want to do a tenant improvement, doesn't mean you're allowed to tear down that wall. So we're going to tell you, okay, for this project, you need a general contractor, you need an architect, you need a gas fitter. And who are those people, so we can invite them into the project. So you can kind of, you know, form your team even before you go into City Hall. So, yeah, I'd like to thank Alex for bringing us to Los Banos. We'd worked with him previously in Truckee, and he's always been a great project partner for us. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time this evening.
Questions? Just one quick question on that team member building. Back one slide.
Sure.
Team member functionality. So you said that you would list possible people that fit those, you know, if you need a general contractor.
Right, by roles. So we wouldn't be suggesting an individual general contractor. I think that would be a little unethical.
Yeah.
It would be, on each permit, we could do restrictions for, this permit can only be applied for by a licensed and bonded contractor, like a commercial building permit. Whereas for like homeowner-based projects, you know, you can self-certify, but if you're going to install a circuit, you've got to get somebody to do it for you. And we can set that on a per-permit basis. Now that we have a database of all the permits in the city, and we know which department controls them, we can also start encompassing other rules as we continue to develop the platform. And so the idea there, and this was always a challenge for me in Santa Cruz, is people always thought they could do more of the work than they were actually allowed to do in commercial spaces. So it's just another feature that we'll be working on.
It's more of a listing the professional that is, that you need or to be eligible to do that job versus a specific person.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
Just one last comment. On the backend, Peter showed a slide with the metrics and the fees and the applications. So what we can do at the staff level is, again, on the backend, go in and look at the applications, or look at folks that are logging in. If they're leaving their contact information in their application, we'll go in and follow up with them, reach out to them, ask them if they had any issues, if they have any questions. So it's really, you know, again, a real powerful economic development tool to be able to do that and make that one-on-one connection with folks who are really looking into creating a business, or entrepreneurs here in Los Banos. So, works pretty well.
Mr. Friar.
I'm pleased to see it. I'm pleased to see the way it works. It's very slick that it works with one of these, because this is the way the world lives now. And it's difficult to get into offices, you know, people work at all different kinds of hours now. And we're bringing, you know, Los Banos, making it business-friendly in the 21st century. And I'm very, I love the way it's laid out. I like the way it clicks on, brings up permits. Got a situation, bring up permit. What you need, whom you need, what kind of, I'm very pleased to see that. I'm also pleased to see that it learns. That's very cool. That's very modernistic, and I think that's where, that's where technology is now. I'm glad to see that Los Banos is where.
I'm pleased we've developed an engineering team that's way, way smarter than me.
Well, it'd be interesting to see how it progresses through time, and to see the results over the year, two years, or whatever, and how it, and how the customers enjoy it, how the city enjoys it, and how it works for us. I'm very, I mean, this is very exciting for me. That's the kind of thing I like to see.
So please, you know, as you're talking to prospective businesses, as you're meeting with chambers, business advocate groups, please let them know it's there. It's a tool for them to use. It doesn't commit them to doing projects. It's just a really good way to get information out of the city, and start establishing relationships with the professionals here that will help them make those dreams a reality.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Have you thought about venturing your company out into other areas of city government other than just the permit process to help people understand, such as the people this evening who came and registered their concerns about what they may need to do, what they may need to get a permit for, or what a new ordinance may be within a city?
Yes, ma'am. Our long-term plans are really to be a modern, full-stack permitting and licensing system. We've really focused on economic development, commercial development more or less, because that was sort of my expertise. That is out and running great. Now we're moving into residential projects for a number of communities here in California. And we're also getting into processing byright permits, those things that are just transactional, like, you know, business licenses, re-roof permits, things that don't require extensive plan check processes or public hearings, and just try to make that so that it's easy to do. I have literally a wall full of built business licenses in our offices in San Francisco, and maintain state registrations in a number of communities that we're working. And I'm shocked at how hard it is to give money to governments, particularly this state of New Mexico. There, I'll throw them under the bus. There, so really where we're going is residential projects and special events projects. Anything that really falls between private and public property is always a challenge for cities. So those are the main kind of areas that we're working on next. We're really going to focus on permitting and licensing. To be honest, I don't have a great background in code compliance, but one of the great things about working with cities over the course of years is like, our cities give us most of our ideas at this point. Like, they're pointing out the corner cases for us, they're informing us, they're working with us on a monthly basis, basically. Like, these things are challenging for us, and that's helping us develop new products and services for the cities that we work with.
I know that we have a contract that we were awarded, a government contract for code enforcement for a certain allotted time. And there's an agency that we use that assists us with that contract. And it seems from the information that I've been told is that they're extremely knowledgeable in that type of codes throughout the state of California for various cities. You know, they've worked in Los Gatos, some of the higher-end cities within the Bay Area and in the state of California. And, you know, we've been pretty fortunate to be able to get that grant from the government. But, you know, that's another avenue, maybe of some organization that can assist you with that kind of thing. But that would really make me happy to see that type of software provided to cities to help them, because it helps the residents be able to quickly access what a city's expectation is of them, and not have people angry because they can't find out where they're supposed to get the information. And to just make it easily accessible on the internet, on their phone, or whatever way they can get that to them. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, moving on to item number eight, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described herein, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of certifying a subsequent environmental impact report, EIR, State Clearing House Number 2016051033, and mitigating, monitoring, reporting plan for the Los Banos General Plan Land Resource Amendment, and approving the Los Banos General Plan Land Resource Amendment as it pertains to corrections and error regarding the quantity and location of prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and unique farmland within the city's urban growth boundary. And we are going to go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Unfortunately, Stacy could not be here tonight to present this item. However, she's been working with Richard James from EMC Planning from Pacific Grove. Richard's seated at the staff table tonight. He helped present the item at the Planning Commission some weeks ago. Planning Commission approved the item, and with the recommendation that they move on it to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Just a little background on Richard. Richard's been in and around the City of Los Banos for a long time. He's been a contract planner on small and large projects in the City of Los Banos for some time. I think one of the very first planning projects I worked on when I became city attorney was with Richard. So he comes very highly experienced in terms of not only the City of Los Banos, but in planning. And I think his specialty is environmental impacts. And so because of Stacy's absence tonight, he has been given the task of presenting this item. So he's seated at the staff table there, and he has a PowerPoint presentation for you, and I'll turn it over to Richard.
All right, thank you, Bill, and good evening, council members. As mentioned, this is a general plan amendment tonight, but it's a bit of an unusual general plan amendment. There we go. In that, it doesn't really change anything in the general plan so much as it corrects an error that was made when the general plan was adopted, and when the EIR for the general plan was certified back in July of 2009. The error comes into play primarily in Figure 5.4 of the general plan, which is the farmland map. And that map inadvertently showed a number of areas within the urban growth area as urban and built-up land, when in fact, they were farmland, and some of them were farmland of importance, as designated by the Department of Conservation. So with the error in the map, then followed an error in the table, and an error in a characterization of how many acres of farmland would be converted, given build-out of the general plan land use map. So the project was to, first off, rewrite that piece of the general plan, so it's updated and corrected in its numbers, and then do a subsequent EIR to the city's general plan EIR, to accurately characterize conversion of farmland. So, oops, go on clicker, here we go. Okay, those are the points I just mentioned. Onto the next slide. There we go. So the notice of preparation is the first step in preparing an EIR. It was published in May of 2016. A 30-day period is allowed for agencies to present comments. Was also sent to the state to be distributed to state agencies. Scoping meeting was held here at City Hall on September 13th of 2016. Merced County sent a representative to that meeting. And there were also a couple of written comments submitted for consideration in the content of the EIR. There we go. I think each paragraph is a separate click on there. That's okay. So the EIR went out for public review on April 28th of 2017, for a 45-day period. And the EIR is basically a tiered, as I said, from the general plan EIR that had already been certified, hence a subsequent draft EIR, was prepared, and it was prepared specifically to analyze the changes to the general plan's agricultural section evaluating farmland. So it focused specifically on farmland and exclusively on farmland. Go to the next one. So the error that I mentioned, this is the corrected farmland map. People are familiar with some of the annexation proposals that were afloat back in the mid-2000s, including a large Stone Creek annexation to the north of Pacheco Boulevard near Merced College, the Lakes proposal, which is a kind of center north, Villa Barano in the northeast, which actually was annexed to the city. And then Stone, rather, Ranchwood Homes had proposed, I think, three or four different annexations along the Pioneer Corridor in southern Los Banos. And when the general plan was prepared, and the general plan EIR was prepared, all of those annexation areas that were proposed were identified as urban and built-up land, even though they were not yet even in the city limits. So it was really an error in the mapping, and then that carried forward into the table. So the corrected numbers on important farmland result in an additional 3,343 acres of conversion. So the loss in total from the 46, 56 that was identified by the city back in 2009 is increased to 7,945. There's a slight oddity in this, in that the EIR also had identified farmland of local importance as important farmland, but that's not one of the categories that's identified as important farmland in SEQA guidelines. So there's a little bit of a subtraction and a large addition for that land that was mis-mapped. But in total, the increase is 3,343 acres. So there are a number of things that mitigate the loss of important farmland, and those were cited, of course, when the original EIR was prepared for the general plan. The EIR contains six or seven policies specifically aimed at preserving or protecting farmland. A number of those, for example, the main one is POSRI 28, which requires the city to incorporate an urban growth boundary, which it has on its land use map. And that's kind of the middle line. If you look at the city's land use map, you'll see the city limits, that's all of the incorporated land. And then there is the urban growth boundary, which makes a ring around that, primarily to the west and to the south. And then beyond that is the planning area. And the area between the city limits and the urban growth boundary is your future development area. That's all of the area which the city has said at some point, we think this will develop. So all of those errors occurred within that area. Land beyond the urban growth boundary is protected indefinitely until the city changes its urban growth boundary with a revision to the general plan or adoption of a new general plan update. However, there was an increase of the 3,300 and some acres of important farmland that's being acknowledged with this correction. And in recognition of that, the subsequent EIR did recommend one additional mitigation measure that would become basically general plan policy. And that has three main points. And that would be for annexation proposals that would bring new land into the city limits and exceed 50 acres of important farmland, there'd be three extra steps for those annexation proposals. One would be to conduct a vacant land inventory. This process is used in Santa Clara County currently. Anytime a city, say Gilroy or Morgan Hill wants to annex land, they do a vacant land inventory. And that's a piece of information, not only for the city council to consider how much land's already in our city limits that's available for development, and how much are we proposing to bring in now. It gives you information on what your development pattern has been in the past, and how long you expect your existing vacant land to provide development opportunities within the city limits. So it's an informational tool for city council, and it also provides more information for LAFCO when they make their decision on a proposed annexation. The second piece of this is a phasing timeline that would prioritize development within annexation areas to those areas to the extent feasible that have lesser agricultural value. So say you were annexing 100 acres, and 30 of those acres had lesser agricultural land, you'd be looking at phasing the first parts of the development within those less valuable agricultural lands. And thirdly, it reinforces LAFCO's existing requirements on boundaries for annexations, and really focuses on using natural barriers like creeks or existing roads, man-made barriers, to delineate your annexation, so that the new land coming into the city has some sort of a buffer between it and the ag land outside of the proposed city limit line. Another impact that was identified in the subsequent EIR was already identified in the general plan EIR, and that was a conflict with the Williamson Act. As of last summer, there were 10 parcels totaling 271 acres within the urban growth boundary. boundary that were under Williamson Act Agricultural Protection Contract. Next slide is other changes. These are changes that happen when development occurs near agriculture. They were found to be less than significant in the subsequent EIR. And a final subsequent EIR was prepared after the conclusion of the public review period. Primarily, a final EIR is published to address comments that came in during the public review period. There were comments from LAFCO and comments from the Merced County Farm Bureau. The next slides go over the comments that came in from those two agencies and organizations. LAFCO commented that the subsequent EIR was deficient because it excluded commonly-used mitigation measures. That would be conservation easements, which are typically either a fee that's imposed on a developer when they develop agricultural land, or the developer is required to go out and purchase directly a conservation easement, typically at a one-to-one ratio. For every acre of agricultural land they develop, they need to secure an easement on some other agricultural land. The city in general has not been supportive of that methodology because of the added burden on developers. The city has relied instead on its urban growth boundary that it established and that I discussed earlier. The urban growth boundary prevents the city from encroaching with development beyond that line and hence protects a large number of agricultural acres that are outside of the urban growth boundary but within the city's planning area. The other comment from LAFCO had to do with general plan policy POSRI 32, which has to do with extending Class 1 water from CCID to lands after they've been annexed. CCID just recently, in October of last year, revised their policy and has now provided a method that a landowner can continue its Class 1 water delivery after annexation. The advantage of Class 1 water from CCID as opposed to Class 2, you're more assured of deliveries and the cost is less. If, under the prior policy from CCID, once land was annexed, it automatically went to Class 2 water delivery and the price for that water went up. Merced County Farm Bureau had a large number of comments. The first two concern how much farmland would be converted, and they were a little bit alarmed at the increase from 4602 to 7945. But in fact, the general plan amendment we're considering tonight doesn't increase the amount of farmland that would be converted. It simply acknowledges the amount of farmland that would be converted because of the error that was made when the general plan was prepared. They also requested that the council consider increasing the number of floors within a building. You could also look at possibility, I don't believe they commented, but increasing density allowances and so on. The logic behind that being that the more you can fit within your city limits and the more densely you can develop the developed areas of the city, the less you need to encroach outwards into farmland. So that is something the city could consider. However, we did not add that as a mitigation measure. However, the mitigation measure we did add does include that vacant land analysis, which gives the city council some information on that when an annexation comes forward and they are considering it. We already, well, the next comment, are we on the next slide? Yeah. They don't believe that the mitigation measures are satisfactory and the loss of farmland will harm the city's economy. I think the city is well aware of the value of agricultural land around it to its economy. And I think the city has adopted its urban growth boundary specifically for that reason, to protect that farmland for the long term. And as I said, mitigation measure added to the policies already in the general plan further protect agricultural land. The next comment from Merced County Farm Bureau is similar to the one from LAFCO regarding CCID water deliveries. There was also a concern from Farm Bureau on where water would come from for development in the future. That was already addressed as an issue in the certified general plan EIR, and we did not revisit that issue. We only looked specifically at effects on farmland. Because there's no different development proposed, there's no different analysis of water demand. So that was, that item was not, not addressed. Their comment on general plan policy POSRI 30, that's a policy that addresses a notification to landowners that there's agricultural land adjacent to their property when they buy it. It's written into a deed when the property is transferred typically to subdivision. And they're correct that there's nothing in there that stops you from suing the farmer because they're, you know, making dust, but it is a notice to you and you should be well aware when you buy a property adjacent to farmland that you do have potential for noise and dust and other effects of agricultural adjacent to your property. And then their final comment, I think we've already addressed as well, that has to do with the adequacy of mitigation that the city's proposing and the city's reliance primarily on its urban growth boundary to mitigate effects on agriculture. So a public comment. This meeting was noticed on August 25th, 2017 in the Los Banos enterprise. Two comments were received, both of those during the public review period for the EIR, and they've both been discussed here. And no other comments have been received at this time. Oh, I missed the Planning Commission slide. The Planning Commission held a public hearing starting on June 28th that was continued to July 12th, and they recommended approval of the Los Banos general plan amendment and the subsequent, and certification of the subsequent EIR. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt Resolution Number 5889, which certifies a subsequent environmental impact report and adopts the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and to adopt Resolution Number 5890, which approves the amendment to the general plan regarding land resources. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Freya.
Could you go back a couple of slides regarding agricultural activity next to property?
POSRI 30.
That's the one. Are we fixing that in this resolution?
I believe, I believe there was a typographical error in that. No, I think that was a CCID policy. We aren't making any change to that policy or we're not proposing one.
Okay, so POSRI 32. So it allows...
Oh, that's the water rights. Yes.
Oh, that's agricultural water. No, that, not that one.
Okay, 31.
31.
It's actually 30.
Is it 30?
POSRI 30.
Okay, maybe it's 30. 31 is similar.
There it is. Does not stop taking measures against agricultural. We live in an agricultural community. People buy a house next door to a farm, they better expect farming activity to be going on, they better not be able to sue them.
Right.
So we're fixing that in this?
We're not, we're not making any change to that. I can read that policy too if you'd like to hear what it actually says.
Okay, go ahead and read it.
Yeah, it says, "require property developers adjacent to sites where agricultural uses are being conducted to inform subsequent buyers of potential continued agricultural production and the lawful use of agricultural chemicals, including pesticides and fertilizers." So it's essentially, it's putting a purchaser on notice of an existing condition.
Now, but it's not going to prevent them from taking action against a farmer?
Ah, you don't think that policy in itself. Now, Bill, do you know if the city has a right to farm ordinance?
City does not have a right to farm ordinance, and so the normal way to deal with that is through that notice to the subsequent buyer that there are farming activities in the area, so they're on notice before they buy the property. I don't know, but I don't believe it keeps them from filing an action, but I think it might be a defense for the farmer from the, from, from the action if that property owner had notice of those things.
Right. But that's still going to cost the property owners some legal fees to...
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything in this subsequent EIR we can do to fix that.
Is there something we can do in city ordinance to fix that?
Possibly we could take a look at that.
The city ordinance, I think, would be more effective in protecting farmers than a general plan policy.
I was always under the impression, I'm sorry, I was always under the impression we had right to farm laws in Los Banos, but apparently we don't?
No.
Okay. So I don't know if I'll need to make this request towards the end of the meeting or make it now for the record that I would like to ask staff, I know I'm off, I'm off agenda item, but kind of on, to pursue a right to farm ordinance in Los Banos. Because if we can't, I mean, that's, that's our lifeblood. And we can't be, farmers can't be worried about if someone buys a house next door and they're going to sue them for farming. That's ridiculous.
The city attorney to advise on, is that something...
Sure, we can, we can do some research on it and send you an MO on that, on that issue.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to pursuing that. I would like to get that carved in city ordinance. Anyway...
If I could, Mr. Freya, could I open the public hearing or did you have some more questions?
Uh, no, other than that, it seems like we're correcting some issues. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
All right. So now open the public hearing on item 8A.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, members of staff. My name is Jeff Roberts. I work for a company called Granville Homes in the city of Fresno. I've spoken here before you on several occasions in the recent past, and I have worked very closely with Stacy on this particular issue for better part of a year and wanted to offer our support for the recommendation from staff here this evening. I did make similar comments at the Planning Commission meeting in July, and I'll be very brief, but I'm in favor of both the resolutions certifying the, the new environmental document and the resolution approving the plan amendment for you. The City of Los Banos has chosen with this documentation, has, I think, chosen to strengthen protections for agricultural uses in the sphere of influence while at the same time providing an opportunity for economic development, something that we're very interested in as a developer. I'm glad to see that the city staff did not choose to go the conservation easement, the mitigation route that you do hear about. I'm here to tell you, it's not as common as one might think in the San Joaquin Valley. I have an opportunity to work in about eight different municipalities, and it is not a common thing. And where it is used, it serves to increase cost of both ag land that is nearby a city and it increase costs of the houses that end up being built on the property. So I would hate to see Los Banos put itself at a competitive disadvantage with other cities in the San Joaquin Valley by imposing something like that. I think the six policies that staffers recommended, while they do require a bit more work on our part, if we come in the door with an annexation request, I think they're valid and reasonable. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, again, support staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak at the public hearing? Not see anyone. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Are there any questions of council? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution, City Council Resolution Number 5889, certifying a subsequent environmental impact report, State Clearing House Number 2016-051033, and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan for the Los Banos General Plan Land Resource Amendment. Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5889 as read.
Ms. Lewis?
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Freya, second by Councilmember Lewis to approve the resolution as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5890, approving the Los Banos General Plan Land Use Resource Amendment. Mr. Freya.
Thank you. I will move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5890 as read.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freya, second by Councilmember Lewis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now moving on to item number nine. Consideration approval of City Council Resolution Number 5891, approving a third amendment to agreement between the City of Los Banos and Allied Waste Services of North America LLC for collection and transportation of solid waste, recyclable materials, and green waste by extending the current term to June 30th, 2021 with updated terms. And we will go to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Tonight I have for you a contract extension with Allied Waste Services. It's a pretty basic extension that we're asking for. We've been contracting with Allied since September of 2007. Our current contract expires on June 30th of 2018, and it does have an option in the current contract that allows for us to extend the contract out another three years. That would put us to June 30th, 2021, and so we are asking that we do take that option tonight. The new contract, in addition to the three-year extension, will also include a contract extension payment of $750,000 and a monthly remittance of $26,595 for costs associated with the landfill closure that's located off of Mercy Springs. The amendment also restructures how the contractor's compensation is paid. So currently, the contractor's compensation is paid on a revenue basis. This would put it on a service basis. So basically, by the amount of canisters that they're picking up and how often they're picking them up for both residential and commercial customers. So we do feel like this contract extension cleans up not only the year that we have left, but the three-year extension as well. And so staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the amendment, the third amendment to this contract, with Allied Waste Services extending the contract terms to June 30th, 2021 with the updated terms. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And also Keith Hester is here with Republic Services if you have any questions for him.
Are there any questions of council? So I have, I just have one comment. I'm glad to see that we came to, to an agreement. One of the things that I do want to make sure that happens is, is that moving forward, I know that three years is going to go by relatively quickly and, you know, from what I've been told, it takes quite some time to put RFPs together. And so I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're already preparing for that so that we're not caught. And it's not, this is nothing against Allied. I think you guys do a great job. I just think that at some point, we, this goes back out to RFP and we don't need to be under the gun, you know, down two years and then all of a sudden we decide then we're going to put it together. That's just my humble opinion. So I just would want to kind of put it on the record is that, you know, we're, I feel like this is going to be accepted. I think Allied does a great job. Three years was built into the original, you know, there was three, I think it was one-year extensions that was built into the original contract. But at some point, we have to go out to RFP, and I would like that we start thinking about that stuff now so that when the time comes to move forward with that, that we're, we're prepared and ready to do so.
Yep, that is something that staff has been discussing.
Very good. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd also like to make a comment in regards to preparation for going out for RFP. I know that I've been concerned about the cost of services for Los Banos, not particularly pointing at Allied, but just the cost of services in general. And in one area particularly, I did some research. San Jose for over several decades has reduced their garbage can size and their recycle can size and their green waste can size with a choice of 36 gallon, 64 gallon, I think the other one is a 92 gallon. And there are different cost levels associated with whichever size receptacle that you are going to be requesting. I believe currently in the City of Los Banos, we have two gated senior communities that are offered a smaller receptacle for just trash waste. And, you know, outside of those two communities, we do have a number of seniors that live in Los Banos who may just have a husband and wife household and no additional family members living with them, or just a single household of older seniors who are paying the same price that everybody else pays for on the market. And I would like to see that expanded out to the rest of the community. And I would like to see that expanded out to the rest of the community, not just the gated community of people that are 55 and older. And also the fact that, you know, the state of California is always wanting us to reduce garbage, waste and such. So we need to be looking at what size trash receptacles and recycle cans that we're offering our community to help reduce the amount of garbage that's going into our landfill as well as the amount of garbage that's being picked up for recycling and green waste. So those are the things that I'd like staff to look at as far as the upcoming RFP in three years and look ahead in planning for that.
Okay.
That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson Santos?
Thank you. I have a comment as well, and I think it just piggybacks off of what Deborah was saying is that I know that we've had some, I may say stats, some pretty good stats as we made when it comes to our services with Allied. And I just hope with our RFP, we can uphold those same great standards. So just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Mr. Faria.
Yes, I want to echo Ms. Lewis's ideas. Anything we can do to lower the cost of service to people that don't need higher cost of service, the smaller cans or whatever it is, anything we can do to do that, not only in the waste. I'd love to be able to see it done in our own water and sewer, if there's a way to do it. Particularly, the seniors particularly feel it, the retired seniors on limited incomes. But there are also people who don't have a lot of money and could sure use the help. And so anything we can do as we push forward, we have three years now to look at this new contract. And I would love to see us, the garbage would be one way. And the size differences seems to make a lot of sense, both on an ecological and a humanistic position. So I would support that idea as we move forward with that.
No other questions? Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Faria.
Thank you. I would move.
What's that? It's not a public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Free.
I've moved to approve city council resolution number 5891 as read by title.
Ms. Johnson Santos?
Second.
We have a motion by council member Faria and a second by council member Johnson Santos to approve city council resolution number 5891. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 10. Consideration of approval of city council resolution number 5892 authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement and the public works director, city engineer, to administer said agreement with David Tossig and Associates Incorporated to provide a nexus study for the update of the city of Los Manos development impact fee program and adopt a revised budget for the fiscal year 2017-18 as it pertains to expenditures for the city hall admin fee account for impact fees. And we will go to Public Works Director, Mr. Fajian.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Tonight before you, staff is recommending that you adopt resolution number 5892, which basically has four things in it. And it all pertains to a nexus study for the update of the city of Los Manos development impact fee program. We'd have to amend the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget. The second thing would be enter into a professional service agreement with David Tossig and Associates to perform the fee study. Third thing would be authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. And the fourth thing would be, the administration's agreement would be by the public works director, city engineer. A little brief background, development fees are placed on development of land per conditions and they're required for the approval of development projects. The fees are typically justified as a future impact that the development will have on the existing infrastructure. The fee should be roughly proportional to the impact of that project, to that infrastructure. In order to impose these fees, local agencies need to make certain findings. And these findings are usually set forth in a fee study that ties in the findings with the fee. And it's tied into capital projects. These fees can be levied for construction of capital improvements, but they're not for maintenance or operation of capital projects. So what staff wishes to do tonight is to enlist a consultant specializing in development impact fees to perform said study. A little more background on this, the last study of our impact fees was done in 2006 by Goodwin Consulting Group. So that was quite a few years ago. Since then, we've had CPI index increases for three years, but they ended in 2009. So the fees have been the same since 2009. This study may recommend that fees are adjusted, does not necessarily mean an increase in rates is required. And each fee is looked individually. So several fees can go up, several fees can go down, several fees can stay the same. It's just totally based on the methodology that's used in that study at that time. And we have different parameters because how many years are quite a bit old. So we had different parameters, different master plans to look at to base this fees on. The fee nexus study that we're proposing to do is to look at the existing 12 fees, and I'll just read them for you. They are in your staff report on page two. City Hall fee, fire protection fee, the park development fee, the community center fee, police fee, there is an administration fee, water facilities fee, wastewater facilities fee, storm drain facilities fee, traffic impact fee, that's the local streets, corporation yard fee, and a quimby in lieu of fee. This is a payment in lieu of providing parkland. Developers can provide a payment in lieu of providing a parkland and that will mitigate their parkland requirement. At the city council meeting on March 1st, 2017, staff was directed to release an RFP to look at this, to look at the study, the nexus for the study. We did do public notices in the Los Manos enterprise on May 12th, May 19th of this year, 2017. And we also advertised it on the city's website. So the RFPs were due on June 16th, 2017 at 5:00 PM. We got three proposals from three very reputable consulting firms, Goodwin Consulting, Hansford Economic Consulting, and David Tossig and Associates Incorporated. These were reviewed by five directors and they were Police Chief Reasy, Fire Chief Marison, Finance Director Williams, Community Economic Director, Development Director Elms, and Public Works Director, City Engineer Fajian. All five of us independently reviewed this and we all unanimously reached a conclusion that we thought that the David Tossig and Associates proposal, we deemed the most complete for what we were looking for at this time. So the Public Works Department then checked references and we contacted five different cities. Four responded back with very positive references to this firm. We also reviewed similar studies. They gave us similar studies that we're looking at what we're looking at. They also have a traffic consultant to look at the traffic fee. So we looked at a traffic consultant study that had done in the past. And they definitely tied into what we were looking for. So based on this and the unanimous opinion of the five department heads, an interview was set up with David Tossig and Associates. And the panel was the Fire Chief Marison, Community Economic Development Director Elms, and Public Works Director, City Engineer Fajian. We did have about an hour-long interview with Nathan Perez, who is here, and he's the project manager. He's here to address. The interview went very well. All our questions were answered. And based on this interview and based on a unanimous opinion of the three people that conducted the interview, the recommendation, recommendation, excuse me, was to bring forth before council an approval of a professional services agreement with David Tossig and Associates. Now, as far as the fee fiscal impact on this, we were given a fee schedule of $57,750 by David Tossig and Associates. At this time, we only have about $15,000 of that has been budgeted in the traffic impact fee. So there is a $42,060 budget amendment for the remainder, which is part of this resolution that we're asking you to approve. We do have David Tossig and Associates has executed the agreement ahead of time and they have provided us with insurance that was, our insurance carrier did approve it. So we have actually gone through some of the preliminary stages in case it's approved. So to let you know about the schedule of this, these projects take about 16, 17 weeks from the notice to proceed. But that is really totally dependent on how quick the city can respond to things we need to supply the consultant. And we do need to supply the consultant with quite a bit of information, finance department, Public Works Department, Police Department. And usually it extends more than 16 weeks. That's mainly due to the city getting the information to the consultant. Once a consultant gets the information, they're usually pretty much online with their timetables, which is one of the things we asked other agencies and they said they were online with everything they had done for them and on budget also. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer any questions. Also, as I said, Mr. Nathan Perez has kindly shown up tonight and lived through the agenda. Thank you. Do you? You and Stacy too. So if you have any questions, he's here to answer anything on his RFP response. That's all my reports so far.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Mr. Perez, I have a quick question for you, if you wouldn't mind coming up. So 16 weeks, no later than December 2017, says that's the timeline, right? In your experience, typically, how long does that? How close are we? I get it, and Director Fajian pointed out that it really depends on, you know, how quick staff can get you back the information. I like expediency, I like a job well done, but then, you know, so you've obviously worked with other cities. Typically, what's the turnaround time?
The provision of that information is the main bottleneck. If we get that and we're going to pester your staff to no end and we're pretty well-conditioned and well-versed and able to do that, if that moves within sort of the, we'll do everything that we can. But if that can move within sort of an eight-week timeframe, we can make that. If that gets pushed back, if a master plan or a specific plan gets swapped out or if there's some discussion about that, that can really prolong that 16, 17-week timeline. It's really about that push. And so we come out and we do a kickoff meeting. You know, we spend as much time as necessary at city hall and with the various departments to meet everyone at once. Two days, three, I mean, really whatever it takes. And then we, you know, we show up and counter, sort of online for that function. But, you know, we pull as much information as we can. We're really well-versed at finding, we provide you guys templates, how other communities in the Central Valley and the San Joaquin Valley have done it. So you're not looking at something totally blank and totally, you know, with fresh eyes. Because if I say, what are your park needs over the next five years? Okay, I mean, maybe one park, but what about the replacement of that park and the replacement of the equipment on another facility? So by doing that, we really do guide staff through that process. And for the most part, you know, I'm confident that in that 16 to 20-week timeframe that we can make that happen. That being said, I have had cities sort of either check out or pursue other projects and it can get significantly delayed. But if we get that push, we're right around that timeframe, that's sort of the full timeframe.
Very good. I appreciate that. I just, I like to, I want a good job done, but I don't like the slow wheels of government from turning.
Oh, yeah. I come from a finance and legal background as an attorney. I get it. I don't really sleep. Like, you know, I got three kids. And, you know, and everything that we can do in parallel, we do. You know, the demographics, we're going to start tomorrow, hopefully. And so, and we can check that box pretty quickly. The needs list, we recognize that that's the bottleneck and so that's where we devote a lot of our time. The other big issue, I had, you know, some light ribbing, you know, from the developers in the audience, we start that early as well. And we have a lot of meetings built into the proposal. So we'll be here and we'll start that process and those study sessions as early as possible. So you get used to me, we're asking the right questions. And so I don't want a situation where we're done in 18 weeks and we have to, you know, press pause for three months and have a negotiation because we're surprising someone. I'm not interested in that and you guys aren't interested in that. So we try to develop the notice and get people comfortable as we go. And we're, you know, so we're in San Jose, so we're just right over the pass, so we are in the valley a lot. So, you know, I think there's seven included, but we can be here really as much as needed.
Mayor Protem, I just want to recognize one thing, and this is because of how long it took us to review the RFP. Your kickoff meeting on this December date that you list on their scope of services on page 74, that kickoff meeting is July 2017. Obviously, we haven't hit that kickoff meeting date. So I'm using more than the 16 weeks. And we have done this process before. It didn't come to fruition to the council. And the only hangup that we had at that time from the public work side, a lot of these are ours, had to do with the traffic master plan because it's not the best thing that we have.
And recognizing some of those issues, you know, some of the issues with MCAG, we do a lot of traffic studies on our own, but we brought in a specific traffic expert to assist us. We thought it would be, there's some unique elements that we really wanted, sort of the extra bandwidth and sort of extra oomph and gravitas behind that when we spoke to them. So we have TJKM based out of Pleasanton, they do a lot of work, they did the MCAG study. Hopefully, it's not a bad thing, but they're very experienced in the valley as well. So we thought that would be important and it allows us, I think, to move faster as well. We'll try to make up as much time as we can.
And I thank you for pointing that out, Mark. I didn't even pay attention to that July. So I mean, just, it says 16 weeks, let's try to keep to 16 weeks. Let's do a good job and have something deliverable. And if, you know, if it's our, you know, reason, because it took us a little longer to get something, hey, I completely understand that. But I just, we'll be coming back in 16 weeks and saying, hey, where are we at and, you know, what's going on with it. Mr. Free, you have a question?
You're an attorney, you said?
Yes.
Well, that'll speed things up.
We have found that it is helpful. I mean, I do, in fact, we work all day, every day. I don't know.
The city attorney and I go way back. So I've been ribbing him about his profession for a long time. And the joy of being in the same town for a long time is we all are able to do this and have some fun and enjoy what we do. What's not fun is driving across this town. And the traffic situation here is disastrous. And it's one that has to be dealt with. And I'm hoping that the fees are going to come back. That's one. Of course, public safety is another one. Our public safety numbers are way down and we said there's some police fees that can go in that, include. So, and when I look at this since 2009, that's a long, long time, particularly in the modern world and the cost, and the cost of doing business now. I mean, the fact that we have to hire you to figure out, we have to pay $60,000 to figure out how many, and then, of course, we have to include that $60,000 in the fee, right? In the fee schedule. So.
I'm really happy with that second or third permit is pulled that you paid for me. That's always a good day for us.
We have to recoup, we have to recoup the cost of estimating the fees. And that's just the way you do business in California and government particularly. And it's the price you pay. But I'm pleased to see this happening, pleased, finally, and bringing update, because we are behind. And we're behind infrastructure, we're behind public safety, we're behind public service. We're just catching up because we have a very good staff. We get a lot done for, we get a lot of bang for our buck in this town because we have employees who care about this town and they work really, really hard. And so they're very, very efficient, whether they be public safety, public works and all vital services and administration. Everybody understands that this is home. And so they do a great job. I'm pleased to see this going forward. And I don't know, does anyone else have any questions?
Still a few more.
Okay, then I'll shut up and let the questions fly.
City Manager Trazas?
Just one comment. We've, like was mentioned, built in a number of stakeholder workshops into the process. We, careful what you ask for, but we want and are encouraging involvement from the development community in the process. The interest is a transparent, collaborative process with the development community on developing our recommendations for you, the council.
Yeah, the staff was very clear about that when we went through. They said, take a deeper look at that. And we amended our proposal and came back with a little bit more detail on those points. We're well-versed in that. I mean, it's both an education. You know, the narrative has to be developed, presented, then the negotiations occur. I'm driving up to Sacramento tonight for early morning with the North State BIA. I'm well-versed in it and it's, it is. It's not as much of stress for me, it's what I do. But I understand that it gives, it does stress people out. So I'm happy to take that burden to the extent I can. So, but, you know, getting folks involved early and then, you know, having done a lot of work, driving through and on the 99 corridor, I, you know, have a really good feel for fee levels, both absolute and relative terms, which is really important. I mean, because this is, land use is not just in a vacuum or in a bubble and we need to understand other communities. So hopefully. to understand other communities, so hopefully, we can bring that in, bring that in as quickly as possible. Because a lot of that information we can start with now. I mean, where are you, where, really, where are your fee levels? We haven't been escalated since 2009, but what does that really mean? So we can, we can start that next week.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. In your working with other cities, at the end of the road, when you develop a plan, is, is there something built in for cost adjustments automatically as you move forward, rather than letting the plan that's formulated go for seven or eight years and then you have to go back in and just redo this thing all over again? That would be something that...
Absolutely. Yeah, I think, you know, construction costs are, you know, consumer price index of 2009, I mean, roughly 3%. You have, you know, so we're, you know, maybe 18% back of where, you know, where you otherwise would be. We do like to include it, you know, certain things, different councils take different positions on whether things can be automatic. You know, annual resolutions do have to be passed and escalators typically do like to be reviewed, but we do like to set the tone early that that's going to be a part of it and also a part of the negotiation with the development community. Because if that falls, you know, you're just, every 10 years, right, 2006 to 2017, you're just catching up. And that's not really what we want to accomplish. So we do our best to make that very, very clear and build that in. To the extent it's necessary, I don't think you guys would, would need the services, but, you know, we can assist with, you know, annual audit keeping, annual audits, record keeping, and then the five-year reports required under the AB 1600. So, you know, we, we help a lot of communities with those and you guys are bigger and I don't think you need that, just based on what we've pulled thus far, but, you know, we can. And we do have sort of a little tickler system that says, you know, your year is up, you might want to check this out and file your necessary reports and escalators.
And the staff is always good to bring things back, but I just want to make sure that we're not playing catch-up as, you know, we're having to do right now.
Right.
That we're ahead of the game and if there's a cost adjustment that needs to happen as a result of the size of the city and the services provided, that the city has the ability to move forward and do that.
Right, because, and once you've lost that opportunity, I got knock-down, drag-out negotiations tomorrow and we're significantly less than they would have been had they just been escalating for 10 years. And that's, that's how I close every negotiation. No one seems to care, but, you know, it's, that is really, I think, a low-hanging fruit that we have to evaluate, so. But, you know, understanding the development communities' inputs, where they're looking to develop, sources of value for them, key infrastructure for them, I think that's very, very important. And then also, a commitment between the council and staff that the fees, you know, are going to be used, which they have been, but are going to be used to build that infrastructure. I think that's really, really key, so.
Thank you for that answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Freya.
I'll move to approve City Council Resolution Number 5892 as read by title.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Sorry, I clicked you off there. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Freya, a second by Councilmember Lewis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, City Council.
Thanks.
All right, we're moving on to item number 11. Consideration or approval of City Council Resolution Number 5893 approving a second amendment to City Manager employment agreement as it pertains to an increase, excuse me, as it pertains to increasing the annual base salary by 5%. And we will go to City Clerk Human Resources Director Melanie.
The City Council recently completed its first annual evaluation performance of City Manager Alex Tarazas since his hiring in July of 2016. Pursuant to the terms of the City Manager's employment agreement, the City Council may grant in its sole discretion an increase in the annual base salary. For your consideration tonight is the second amendment that would change Section 3A of the employment agreement to increase his annual base salary by 5%. And that would be retroactive to July 1st, 2017. Everything else remains the same. I think there was a little minor change. I updated his address to his Los Bannas address.
Very good. All right. Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Freya.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm pleased to approve this amendment. Mr. Tarazas has done an outstanding job. And one of the things that impresses me so much is that he is, is competent in the area of the bureaucracy and he is human in the area of people. And anytime I have a problem and I refer people to City Hall, every single time they speak with Mr. Tarazas, within a few days, I get an answer back that the situation's been resolved and resolved amicably. And so I'm very pleased with that and I'm pleased with the direction we're going. He's, these updates that we're doing, this is exactly what we need right now and I feel he's doing a very good job. And so I'm pleased to approve City Council Resolution Number 5893 as read by title.
Ms. Johnson-Santos.
I'd like to second that.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Freya, a second by Councilmember Johnson-Santos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need to just let you turn it off. See, item number 12, advisement of public notices. We have one report, Mr. Tarazas.
Okay, we'll see if I can get this correctly. So we've got a public hearing held by the Planning Condition to consider a conditional use permit and sequel exemption to allow a type 41 alcohol use for Blaze Pizza located at 1335 West Pacheco. That hearing will be held on September 13th, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that's it, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And we will go right back to you with item number 13, City Managers' Report.
Thank you. Just one item. Chamber Executive Director mentioned that we had the last Farm to Plaza last night. Did want to thank the, the chamber and the chamber volunteers for their significant efforts over the summer to pull that all together. A number of volunteers worked on that, so just wanted to express appreciation on behalf of the city for that effort. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to council member reports and we will go to Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just have a couple of things this evening. First, I want to send my condolences to Stacy and the loss of her father. Just want her to know personally that she will be in my prayers and I know it's a really hard thing when you lose a loved one. So Stacy, just know that I'm thinking of you. Couple of other things, I'm not going to ask for it here in the short term, but I will be asking, making a request to city council members to consider the possibility of perhaps ordinance when we have our street sweeping going on, that cars are to be off our public streets. When I see our street sweepers go through the city and they spend 50% of their time serpentine-ing around cars that are not moved, they have cobwebs around them, and there's debris in the streets that ends up in our sewer lines and then we have to clean all that out in the wintertime. It just, to me, defeats the purpose of sweeping the street. So I'm just going to ask the council to, to think on that. I think it's real important that, you know, we've hired these people to keep our city streets clean and we've paid a lot of money for equipment to do so, but yet they're not able to complete their job because we have so many cars parked on the streets that never get moved. The other thing is that I've received a lot of complaints and I've received some excitement about the DeWieners Schnitzel, that people really wanted to come to Los Bannas, but I've received a significant number, a significant number of complaints about the way the building looks. I've noticed over time, because that building happens to, that particular business happens to be in the district that I represent, that overnight additional painting and colors would be added to that building. Now, I want the public to know that the city has not turned a blind eye. They were asked to cease and desist doing what they were doing, but they continued anyway. And I, it's my understanding that the owner of that property is not happy about what has happened as well. So I just want the public to know that the city is working on it. We didn't approve those colors that were put up there. I realize that DeWieners Schnitzel has a particular franchise color, but it doesn't mean that the City of Los Bannas has approved that they're going to paint an entire building yellow and red, including a red tile roof that was on that building. So at this particular time, we are trying to work with the business person who's trying to open up the DeWieners Schnitzel, but they have to abide by what the city has requested them to do. And at this particular time, they've not complied. So be patient. Hopefully, the business owner will comply with what the city has asked them to do and the corrections will be made, but I'm not happy about the colors. I would hope that the rest of our council is not happy about it. And certainly, the owner of the property is not happy about it. So just rest assured that we have concern, the city has concern, and something is being done about it. So for those who have come to me and complained about the color of that building and the multiple colors that are on it, just know that we are working to try to rectify that situation. And that's all that I have this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Freya.
Thank you. Deepest sympathies to the Sousa family. I taught Stacy, Jolene, and Brian and they're very close friends of the family. Dear people, and George was an employee of the city and a model employee at that. And our deepest sympathies go out. It's very difficult, very difficult indeed. And we know that no words can help, but we do send our prayers. On the other end of the life spectrum, since the last time I was here, our daughter blessed us with a new grandson, Christian, and he was born in June. And so life, life goes on in its wonderful cycles and is a very valuable and dear thing and that's the one thing we need to keep as we are people of the city, people of the government. We keep that in mind first and foremost, and that's life and humanity. The Farm to Plaza was successful, very successful. People kind of came in and out. It was one of, it was the hottest summer I think we've ever seen. But most of the evenings, we were able to have a nice evening and I played some music there. Ron Bertello came, volunteered with me, Debbie Lazzato. Also, a number of groups in town came and played music. Vanessa Lovato, Lacey Stevenson, they brought their, their music. Cottonwood Creek, very famous country duo. Thirteenth Step, local band. The DJ, I forgot to get his name, who came out and DJed one evening and it was very nice. I'm looking forward to keeping that going next year. I was kind of a de facto coordinator of the, the music and the entertainment and so we're looking forward to keeping that going because it does give a chance for people to get out and have a beautiful evening in that, in that very nice plaza. And I want to wish a happy birthday to my daughter Arianna in August and my daughter Gabby in September and my son-in-law Jason, also in September. And Tim and Mason, there'll be some big, big announcements coming soon with the moving on there and I'm very pleased to see that. All right, thank you.
Ms. Johnson-Santos.
I would also like to give my condolences to Stacy and her family in this horrible time right now. And then on the other side of that, I'd like to say that the farmer's market, I'm glad that it did so well. Just glad to hear about that. And...
Thank you. I too do want to pass on my condolences to Stacy and her family and wish you all the best and keep you in my prayers for now. The thing I have, Casa's Casino Night is this Saturday. It's only a couple of days away. I talked to one of the Casa volunteers right before the meeting and they have 15 tickets left. 15 tickets, it's $50 per person. It's a fun night of getting to play some casino games. You win funny money and you get to put that into, you win raffle tickets and you can win prizes. They do a really cool spread of food from different local restaurants and it's a strolling, you don't, you just, you can kind of go to each station and kind of try out all the different things. I believe the, the Mission, which is now open in San Onofre, they're going to be there serving food. M&amp;M's, another one, Spagna's, Pimentel's Creative Catering, Baskin Robbins. So it's a fun night. It's this Saturday, September, the night at the Los Bannas Fairgrounds, O'Bannon Building. Doors open at 6:00 PM. For tickets, you can call Diane at 704-0369 or Carol at 761-6600. They have 15 tickets. The mayor actually will be the emcee for that event and I'll be doing the auction that night. It's a cool event and it's for court-appointed special advocates, so it goes for a really great cause. And that's all I have. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Freya?
So moved.
Second?
Do we need a second?
Don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion, still adjourn it.
Okay, Ms. Johnson-Santos, I'm going to let you second it.
I'm going to second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.